Actually, one idea was I probably saved it for freezing in there because I think they... Yeah. Well, snow is coming in. Is there snow coming in?
It's supposed to come in here.
We didn't get feet.
No. It was, it was supposed to come in here.
You're lying here. Well, somebody set it up out there. Y'all just... Y'all rubbed children. You did not set that up. There's no way. That's a good point. Because they do do that for you. That guy was right. Y'all were great. You're darned. She had a stove and everything. Fire go out at the center. Oh, yeah. It gets you real cold real quick. I did that. Camped in Grand Canyon on that. Had to get up there more than two blocks. Yeah. I guess, yeah. What do you imagine going to get it? My one bad decision is the seventy inches. Do it. Imagine just to make sure you went to the door. It was right on the verge of being hit. But I'd be, I'd be scared to say it. I'm not talking. Yeah, better. Yeah?
Ready for chat? Are you ready? It is six thirty in spite of what that clock shows. And we are calling our Tuesday, November regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It's November sixth, 2018. And we note that we do have a quorum of the Planning Commission here. Our first item of business is approval of the minutes from the October sixteenth meeting. You've had a chance to review those. Any comments or corrections? Or? You were absent. This is so true. Okay. Mrs. Chaffin should be removed from the attendance list. Any other corrections?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
We have a second?
I second the motion.
The motion has been second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is to review the meeting calendar and designated posting locations.
So every year we have a couple of annual things that we do. One of those is to approve the posting location for the Planning Commission agendas. And our current location is on the bulletin board just inside the main entrance of the Public Works and Development Department. We don't have an outdoor enclosed bulletin board where we can post things, but we do have glass doors on the front of the building. Most people rely on either published notices, the letters they get in the mail, the sign that's on the property, or the agendas that we put on the website. So there is a lot of information out there, but we are required to formally post. So if you're okay with our current location, we will just continue to do that for next year.
Anybody have any concern with the current location?
No.
Okay, I think by consensus we're approving.
Okay, great.
And do you want specific approval of these proposed dates?
Mainly, I need to know if there are concerns about some of the dates. I did include notes where those might either conflict with a holiday or where they may be immediately following a Monday holiday. Those dates that are immediately following a Monday holiday are mostly just for your planning purposes, to help you figure out whether or not, oh, I'm going to be on vacation at that point in time and you can notify us. If there are concerns with the ones that conflict with certain dates, in some cases, I have suggested an alternate date. And you don't absolutely have to let me know tonight, but if you've had a chance to look it over and if you don't have any concerns right now about those dates, then we can just go ahead and proceed with posting this as the regular agenda for 2019. And then as we get closer to time, if you realize that there is a conflict of concern, you can let us know and we can see about rescheduling that. We try to set the calendar pretty far ahead, partly so that you all know when those dates are, but also for staff and working with the applicants, we have to schedule these things sometimes a couple months out, sometimes several months out. So it helps us to know a pretty good calendar at the beginning of the year.
Anybody have any problems just adopting and we need to change it?
That would be great. That would be great.
Taken care of. Okay, our next item of business is case number UAS 118-002, Houlihan Pipeline Used by Special Review with 1041 Permit.
Pardon me, can I just get clarification on the posting location specifically? Is that an approval by acclamation?
Yes.
Of the board? Thank you.
Go ahead.
So in, in, just for disclosure, my company works with Discovery Midstream Partners on occasion, but we do not work with Discovery DJ Services LLC.
Can I ask, do you have any financial benefit from this pipeline?
I have no financial benefit from this pipeline.
And can you make an impartial decision despite, you know, having worked with or working with this company from time to time?
I can make an impartial decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, is Discovery related at all to DCP Midstream out of Texas? No. Pardon? Okay, thank you. Okay, representing the county is Diane Kocis.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm Diane Kocis, case planner on UASI 18-002, the Houlihan Pipeline application. This is a full use by special review with 1041 requirements. The applicant, Discovery DJ Services LLC, has met all public notice requirements, thereby establishing jurisdiction for this case. The proposed pipeline project will consist of 4.36 miles of a new natural gas pipeline, a crude oil pipeline, a wastewater, otherwise known as produced water, pipeline, a freshwater pipeline, and an electrical 480-volt power line. Placement depths will range between four and six feet below the surface. And this proposed pipeline will operate in compliance with Title 49 of the Code of Federal Regulations. The diameters of the pipes have not been set in stone yet, but they can be a maximum of 24 inches in diameter. This project would reduce the amount of oil and gas truck traffic on local roads. The pipeline project is designed to collect and deliver natural gas and crude oil to regional markets. As you can see on this slide, the proposed pipeline would start in Section 22 at a facility called the Bison Houlihan Pad, and then proceed in a north-by-northwest direction, and it would terminate just over the border in Adams County. At the point of origin down here, the Box Elder Creek subdivision is located to the east. Oh, and I forgot to mention for reference, this is Manila Road. The Planning Division received a few questions during the public notice process from two different citizens, but no comments. The pipeline is wholly within agricultural land, zoned A1. Oh, I think I forgot to say something. I needed to let you know that the conditions of approval changed slightly from the addition that you received in the big fat notebook, but I provided at each of your places a copy of the conditional, conditions of approval within the approval motion. Staff are recommending approval with 16 conditions of approval based on findings contained in the staff report. And as I said, the conditions were revised after the staff report went out due to incorporating additional staff edits. Matt Norton, the applicant's representative for this project, and his team will provide a summary of the project and be able to answer questions. Are there any questions before we proceed to the applicant's presentation?
Diane, can you give us just a brief summary of what changed in these draft motions? Was it predominantly just kind of wordsmithing or is there...
Yeah, it was basically word smithing is all it was. Except one of the conditions, I think Sue Lou can speak to this. She's the case engineer. I believe it was condition 11. We had heard that, that the applicant's discussion with landowners resulted in the words that it really would be up to the landowner as far as revegetation after the pipeline is installed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, we can hear from the applicant?
Yes, Matt Norton will, will come up and summarize the project for you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Matt Norton on behalf of the applicant. My office is at 3601 Stagecoach Road, Suite 202, Longmont, Colorado, 80504. I have to say that at all. You guys didn't ask for it, but I'm so used to saying it. Okay. So I have a presentation that's got about, I think it's 17 or 18 slides. It's going to cover everything from kind of some background on the applicant and a recent acquisition that's taken place, as well as the project, and some of our construction, design, operational, safety, and environmental aspects that we operate under. So like I said, my name is Matt Norton. Jump right into it. This is for, this will cover the Houlihan Pipeline Corridor. So just to make sure we're all on the same page, it'll be three pipelines and one electrical conduit that'll house electrical, electrical line. So just, whoop, there we go. Quick company overview. So I will go ahead at this time and kind of introduce who I've, who I've brought with me tonight. I don't have them slated to speak unless there's a question that you have specifically for one of them or that I can't otherwise answer. So Corey Klein is our operations manager. Chris Roberts is our permitting manager, or sorry, sorry, right-of-way land manager. Scott Ellery is our permits manager. Matt Burghorn is our Director of Engineering and Construction. And then Dustin, it's Will Wallace, sorry. Dustin's new to me. So Dustin is one of our new project engineers and is working on this project here. So a little bit about where we are. So we're centrally located mainly in Weld County and Adams County. We have our operations office in Longmont and a, and our construction office is in Brighton. We've got multiple management personnel across all offices. We have recently had our capital infusion. You may have read about it in the paper, where DJ Services, the applicant, was acquired by a joint venture of Williams and KKR. I am a Williams employee. And so that was mainly because of the growth in the DJ Basin and the growth of our system in particular. The Williams/KKR joint venture provides additional capital for us to continue to build the system out, build facilities that are adjacent to the system. Again, Williams is the operator. We are Rocky Mountain Midstream. That's the, that's the newly named. So this would, this would, I'm here on behalf of the applicant though, which is Discovery DJ Services. We do have a strong preference for local hiring, 90-plus percent to date. Vast majority of our contractors, we're proud that they are local, and we are proud to be moving former Coloradans back home. Talked to a couple today who are looking for houses now. We continue to be laser focused on these Colorado projects, and we bring decades of experience from building projects, thousands of miles of pipeline, stations, treating facilities, and processing facilities across the US. Strong track record for safety. We have a goal-zero safety culture. And stop-work authority is given to anyone and everyone on our sites. We operate under a see-something, say-something type of mentality, which means if you see something that doesn't look right on one of our sites, it is your responsibility as an employer or contractor or visitor to speak up and ask questions. We'll take five, 10 minutes, however long it takes, step back from the job or the work that's going on and make sure that everybody's comfortable before we proceed. Recently had a DOT regulated pipeline construction audit for our Adams and Weld County assets with no findings. Also, no notices of violations for these front-range assets when it comes to FMSA, which is the Federal Pipeline and Hazardous Safety Administration, OSHA, which is the Occupational Safety Administration, CDPHE, or EPA. And obviously well-capitalized to meet our commitments. Jump right into the Houlihan Pipeline Corridor. So this application is for pipelines, a gas line, an oil line, and a produced water line, not to exceed 24 inches. The way that would start out is, so you've got the corridor, which is, there's a 50-foot corridor that we've obtained from landowners. There's an additional 30-foot on the side that's temporary workspace, but the permanent easement is 50-foot corridor. The first line would be laid in the middle of that. Excuse me. And then the plan is, and typically what happens is that initial line will carry gas. Then as the other lines come online, or the main other line, which would be the crude line, the gas would transfer, we would transfer the gas into that second line, and then the original line would then carry crude. The produced water line would be its own separate pipeline that's dedicated just to produce water. And then there's the electrical conduit that goes, that goes in there as well. Spacing on these is typically about five feet from, from pipeline side to pipeline side. That leaves you roughly 10 feet on either side of the outside to the edges of the, edges of the permanent easement. Length of the corridor here is approximately 27,000 feet, total of five miles. Little under four and a half of that being in Arapahoe County. And Diane did a great job explaining the route. So it does start here on the south side, about right here. What you see down here would be additional right-of-way. But the pipeline actually starts here at that pad and then goes north-northwest. Now, it, it actually ties into more pipelines to the north, and specifically a much larger pipeline system that kind of encircles Brighton, Fort Lupton, Kingsburg, that, that area. And then, so this would be the, the southern part of the system. And then we have a northern part of the system that actually goes up to... How far north does that go? Almost Greeley, I think? Yeah, so almost Greeley. From a design and construction standard, so our pipelines are designed and constructed to DOT standards. They're federally mandated standards. 49 CFR Part 192 covers the gas pipelines in the US. 49 CFR Part 195 covers liquid lines, in this case crude. Experienced QAQC inspectors overseeing all aspects of the construction process. In the case of Arapahoe County at road and water crossings, we will go six foot deep at the bar ditch. At least four or five feet cover everywhere else is what we, is what we aim for. The minimum depth of cover is three foot. We also do 100% X-ray on all wells for our steel pipeline, where the minimum standard is 10%. These pipelines are cathodically protected, which is, there's an external coating. I'm going to go ahead and answer this because then I'm going to get this question everybody asks. So we actually impress a current, a light current on the pipeline to prevent it from performing or from, from corroding if there's a nick in the outer coating. What that current does is it, it keeps the steel in the pipe instead of allowing electron by electron to, to go out of the pipe. So, so we do call it CP. So we do have CP to prevent corrosion. Also, when we do bores at the roads or any water crossings, we do use what's called an ARO, an abrasion-resistant outer coating at all those crossings. We hydrostatically test all of our pipeline above the design pressure and well above what we plan to operate at for all of our pipelines. And we do strategically place block valves at either end. Depending on the length, you can sometimes find them in the middle, but typically, once you get less than 10 miles, if you put one on either end, you're good. Permanent easement of 50 feet, like I mentioned, with 30-foot of workspace temporary and then with the five-foot spacing between pipelines. Some safety features for our system. So it is monitored 24/7/365 by our control room with trained operators. We maintain written pipeline safety operations procedures and management programs, as well as monthly training program for all of our operations employees. You also see from the standpoint of leak monitoring and detection, we do have, as part of our right-of-way agreements, it allows us access to monitor the right-of-ways for, for leak surveys, you know, things that just don't look right. We do get out there and mow the right-of-ways from time to time to make sure that the, the pipeline markers that we're, that we're required to put, that you can see those from one marker to the next. We do have integrity management programs for our pipelines, and all of our pipelines are in the Colorado 811 Call Before You Dig One Call Registry. And then this pipeline, or these, the pipelines in this corridor would be subject to our public awareness mailers for the four stakeholder groups covered under the federal rules, which are emergency responders, affected public along the pipeline, public officials like yourself, and... Always forget the fourth one. Effective public... Oh, excavators, sorry. That's it. Can't forget the excavators. Here's kind of a close-up of the right-of-way. You can see the, the landowners as we have them that border, border the right-of-way that we cross. And then a little bit about safety culture. It is deeply embedded in everything we do, whether it's from our design decisions to how we operate, what we do day in and day out, you know, from, from getting in the truck and going from location A to location B. We believe, excuse me, preventing a hazardous situation is the best way to ensure the safety of all of our employees, members of the public, and any contractors that we have on site. All of our facilities meet or exceed industry standards or regulations. All employees and contractors, like I mentioned, do have stop-work authority. And these are the few of the safety systems that we have in place at our sites and along our pipelines. The thing I'm most proud of there is, is we spend a lot of time working directly with our emergency responders. We actually have a drill coming up towards the, I think it's in December this year, where we bring potential emergency responders for our systems in. We do tabletop exercises. We'll have them onsite at locations where we have above-ground locations just to make sure they know where it's at, they know what we're carrying, they know who to call. They've got my number. They've got our operations number. So if something were to go wrong, we're not all meeting there, you know, in the middle of the night. We have regular communications with, with our emergency responders. We think that's important to do. A little bit about environmental from a construction and right-of-way standpoint. It is our goal always to ensure that areas impacted by our construction are restored to at least as good, if not better, condition than when we first got there. Routine inspections are performed according to all of our permit requirements. These pipelines will be subject to SWIP programs, which is Stormwater Pollution Prevention Measures, to prevent sediment from, from running off the right-of-way while we're doing construction and after. Threatened and endangered species of concerns are identified for habitat monitoring by third parties that we use, both before and during construction. And we use restorative vegetative seed mixes approved by local agencies. Like I mentioned before, ongoing leak detection monitoring, and we pride ourselves being responsive to landowner requests and concerns during and after construction. Final slide here, a little bit about community. We do value being a good neighbor and a responsible operator, focus on safety and stewardship. We just don't think there's, there's any other way to, to operate in a community. You've got to be responsible and responsive to your neighbors, and that's, we, we pride... You've gotta be responsible and responsive to your neighbors, and that's, we, we pride ourselves in doing that. I'm, I'm available to neighbors. Our, our right of way folks are available to neighbors. Our operations folks regularly talk to neighbors along our right of ways, next door to our facilities. It, it's, it's just part of what we do, and, and we think it's important. We're actually in the process of hiring another public relations person who will sit in Colorado just to, just to help us with, with those, those type requests and those type of conversations that we, that come in from time to time. Good paying jobs, tax revenue, right of way payments to local landowners. And these are just a few of, of the projects that we've, that we've been involved in in 2018 alone, and we look forward to getting more involved in 2019. And with that, I'm done, I think, with my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Question. First question. Is this work for the short amount of pipeline that's going into Adams County and landing? Have you already received approval from Adams County?
I believe the answer is yes. From Adams County? Yes, it has.
Okay, was it conditional approval similar to what we're seeing here with you having made certain requirements because you're tying up loose ends? Okay, great, thank you. Second of all, I noticed on your slide that there's an area of residential properties where the pipeline runs across, I don't know what road that is, that's behind that.
Manila, isn't it? Right there?
Okay. How, how close, I mean, those are, I can't judge from, you know, just, just from that picture how large those lots are. But how close is that pipeline? I realize it's under the, the road, but how, how close is that to the nearest dwelling that's located on that, those parcels? Do you have any, any estimate?
I do not. I don't know where the, the, I don't know where the houses are located on those actual... It's like they're somewhere in the front, running halfway back.
Do you know the size of those parcels? Are they like a minimum of five acre lots, or?
600 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Give or take. I mean, I, I don't have an actual measurement. He pulled up on Google Earth, so we're taking a best guess.
Thank you. Pretty, pretty close to that, about, yeah, 500, 600. And does it...
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick look at Google Earth, measuring it, it's roughly 600 foot.
And does it run along the entire Manila? That entire street that's either in front or behind those houses? I, I can't tell which. Does it run along the whole length of that subdivision?
We have right of way runs down to, down here.
Right.
Pipeline actually ends right here.
Okay.
You're not sure yet if an extension under DJ Services will, will go further south. We just don't know that. We need to go ahead and acquire the right of way.
Okay, in case you needed to.
Landowner here.
Right.
I need to speak with the microphone. So, yeah, because we're dealing with one landowner here, it makes sense to just go ahead and acquire the right of way now if we don't need it. It's, you know, it's an option we can, we can release.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all your questions, Mrs. Womack?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I guess I have a question. I noticed that road and bridge didn't make a response. Are you, I think part of the discussion was that you are to return whatever damage to the roads to the current conditions. Are you aware, will you know what the current conditions are before you begin?
So before we do, excuse me, before we do crossings of any kind, we take pictures of roads, bridges, waterways, and we do not open cut those. There is no plan to open cut these here. They will all be bored, which means, much like they do with like a distribution line in a neighborhood when they're, when they're crossing the road. So we will, we will, we will back up from the road or the crossing, and then go down and under. And the technology allows us to know that we're five feet, or sorry, in this case, six feet or more below that bar ditch. And then we'll get to the middle of the road and then start coming back up and be six feet below the other bar ditch on the, on the other side.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will open the public hearing. If, I think Stowe makes some more comments.
See Lou can further explain that there's a road use agreement already in place.
Okay.
See Lou, with the engineer services division, we do entering a roadway use agreement with the applicant for those type of project, make sure the county row are in a good condition after the construction.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any other comments right now? Okay. We will open the public hearing. We already heard from Matt Norton and Scott Elam had signed, or Emery had signed in that said he didn't want to speak. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Going, going, gone. Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Do you have any other final comments? Diane? Okay. Bring it back to the planning commission for consideration, discussion, comments, motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Very good, thank you.
In the case of UIS 118-002, the Houlihan Pipeline used by special review, planning commissioners have reviewed the staff report, including exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and the public comment as presented at the public hearing. I hereby move to recommend that the board of county commissioners approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to conditions 1 through 16.
Do we have a second for the motion?
As Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion?
We'll have to say, subject to the conditions as amended, according to our attorney.
Can I amend my motion to say, subject to the conditions as amended, 1 through 16?
All right, do we have a second again for the amended?
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
All those in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
And they oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We have another one. We have a study session.
Does the county want the notebooks back? Does the county want the notebooks back?
We could take those back and pass them on.
Do we have a, a truck to carry them out to the parking lot?
Either might have carried it out.
Thank you, yes.
Maybe my house.
Thank you.
Empty. Looks like the paperclip's...
We can use them anyway, so we could just reuse them.
Mr. White is here to bring us up to date on administrative amendments to the comprehensive plan maps. Mr. White?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. When our mapping division was providing some data to a couple of special districts in the county, they noticed that some of the current land uses didn't align with some of our future land use designations on our land use maps in the comprehensive plan. And they brought them to me, and I went, oh, gosh, how did we miss these? And so I dug into the history of some of these parcels and provided some information about when the zoning was changed on, on the parcels in question. And that's in the, the table on the, the front page of my memorandum to you. The, the urban area land use plan with the red circles on it shows you the location of the, the parcels in question. And mostly what we did in the, the 2018 update of the comprehensive plan was we, we took the 2001 map and included areas that had been annexed or incorporated, and that's about our extent of updating the map. We should have gone further, but we didn't do that. But we're, we're doing that now. What I've indicated, or what I've included in your packet tonight is, corresponding to each one of the numbered circles, is a map with an aerial picture of what actually exists on the ground today. And I'll, I'll say that most of the areas where there's a discrepancy were originally zoned for employment, but they've been developed as some type of residential development. The only, the only exception to that is area number seven, where it's just a, a difference in the density of development that has happened. And one area, I think it's area three, where it was shown as multifamily residential, and it was developed as... Let me take that back. They're all pretty much employment to residential except for area number seven. As I stated in the, the memo to you, the, the comprehensive plan allows us to do administrative amendments contemplating changes to maps like this. One, one change we, we will make is Aurora annexed some property that's just south of the Prosper Development. That's on the west half of the development framework map. That's this area right, right here. And that is specifically listed in the comprehensive plan as a, as a map change that can be done administratively.
How big a parcel did they annex?
Oh, it was several parcels. I think the aggregate was something like, I'm looking at the map. It's at least four sections of, of land, 640 acres each. It's probably 2,500, 600, 700 acres that they annexed, and it became official just a couple months ago. So we want to show that area that's now incorporated on both maps. The other ones are, we would like to do administrative amendments. As you know, the, the plan is, is forward-looking, and it's, the future land use map is a vision for the future land uses in the county. But as I also stated in, in the memo, that one of the purposes of the future land use map is to protect existing areas from future land uses that might be incompatible. And there are several areas on the existing adopted map, south of the Cherry Creek Reservoir and State Park, being one example of an area that's already developed, but we do show it as urban residential, because that's what it is. We don't anticipate it's gonna change, and our vision is not for it to change. So that's one argument to make these map changes to protect, is to protect those existing residential neighborhoods. The one exception I would note where we're not recommending a change is in the Inverness Business Park, where those residential condominium projects were approved, because that's an area that is, that lies within the airport influence area, where residential uses are discouraged. And it, it's my opinion, or we think that it's just not good planning practice to go ahead and show a, a land use, even though it exists on the ground, that, that's inconsistent with those airport influence area regulations. So these are areas we, we didn't catch when we updated the map. We would like to make these changes, as noted on the last page of my, of the memorandum in your packet, well, the second and the last page of the memorandum, and make these changes to the maps administratively. The option, if you do not concur in making those changes administratively, is we'll, we'll come back for a hearing and talk about these map amendments. So I'm open to answering any questions you might have.
Just a quick question. You spoke about Inverness, okay, development. Is that City of Centennial? I mean, who approved that, that development of all the condos and multifamily?
That is, there's a, there's a piece of, there are lots of pieces of Inverness that are within an incorporated Arapahoe County.
Okay, are some of those areas that were developed within the City of Centennial?
I can address some of that. I'm not sure whether that overlay was in place when the preliminary development plan was initially approved. But for whatever reason, that preliminary development plan was approved with residential uses. As those projects came through later for final development plans, the decision was made to honor that preliminary development plan. And the airport was consulted as those projects came through. And I think there were a couple of times when the, the airport staff did voice some concern, but they didn't actually object to those because they were on that preliminary development plan. So they were allowed to move forward as they came in for FDPs.
Okay, so, so from what you're telling me now, and what you, what you indicated, we're, we're talking unincorporated Arapahoe. I mean, that area is, is in Inglewood. I mean, the, the address for the commercial buildings that are in Inverness is an Inglewood address, but I didn't know whether jurisdiction, there were, there were pieces of other jurisdictions besides unincorporated Arapahoe where multifamily and condo were built with the permission of those other jurisdictions other than Arapahoe County.
I think those are all unincorporated Arapahoe. Now, there are pieces, I mean, as you know, your mailing address doesn't necessarily reflect whether or not you're in, in city limits or whatever, but...
Right, but I know that the City of Centennial does have, you know, I mean, the airport is within their jurisdiction, so...
So the City of Centennial does have part of Inverness Business Park. Douglas County has part of Inverness Business Park. Unincorporated Arapahoe has part, a good bit of it. And there have been some residential developments approved in the City of Centennial that the county did not support.
Okay.
So our big concern with this is, we don't really anticipate these residential uses redeveloping for something else for a long, long time. But if they were to redevelop at some point in the future, because they're in the airport restricted zone, we're hesitant to really change that land use designation on the comprehensive plan map. It, it's at least a good way to catch it and make sure everyone's paying attention and making a very conscious decision.
I have a question, maybe Jan, it's for you, or Alan. Is, you know, the comment that kind of strikes me is the one, you know, more broadly, how amendments should be dealt with in the future when applicants submit the comp plan amendment or request, and we deny it, but then something like that gets approved. Is that how all of these kind of anomalies that don't match up with the comp plan occur?
I have not researched those histories, so I don't know.
It doesn't appear that's what happened. A lot of the mixed use zoning happened years before the 2001 comprehensive plan and that land use map was...
Those grandfathered?
It, it's hard, I didn't...
Well, the zoning, the zoning overrides, yeah, the comprehensive plan, and I personally... And I personally really don't like that mixed-use was used as a zoning designation for residential planned unit developments. I think it's really confusing for people, and it's causing some problems for us in the East County. When people buy properties that are zoned mixed-use, they just assume they can run businesses, and then they find out they can't. But unfortunately, we are kind of stuck at this point in time with a number of residential developments that have that mixed-use zone designation.
Well, I'm sorry, I know that you're trying to kind of present us with more information, but I do have a question for our attorney. Does the fact that we're kind of saying, okay, we're going to amend our future comprehensive plans, set a precedent for what can occur down the road? You spoke a little bit about this just now, Jan. What are the risks of kind of just like, you know, grandfathering all this, whoops, you know? Yes, you want to recognize the change in use, I understand that, but I, I'm just concerned that somebody can come back and say, well, you did this here, you know, on an appeal, you know, a denial of a zoning appeal, and say, well, you've done this in all these different places, why are you denying me now?
Well, I mean, ultimately, the comprehensive plan's an advisory document only. It's not code, it's not, you know, it's not detailed enough to say, you know, well, the comprehensive plan says this, so you can't zone it. You know, the idea being comprehensive plans essentially are approved and created by planning commissions, which are appointed boards, versus boards of commissioners, which are elected boards and adopt, have the legislative authority for the county to adopt those plans. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
Well, it does. I mean, it's, again, it's an aspirational document, but certainly, if I was the attorney representing a developer, and I was seeing, in the general area, I'm not talking about in the middle of nowhere, the general area, if something was designated multi-use, you bet I would raise this as like, well, you know, this seemed to be okay, and you kind of waived this in, so, you know, why, when this does go to the Board of County Commissioners, are you denying me permission to do this development now? And I just wanted to be able to evaluate what potential risk the county faced in that, in that regard.
And I think some of that goes to, you know, when did the development occur, you know, versus what the comprehensive plan said. Certainly, you can't apply a comprehensive plan even to the extent it may have some regulatory effect. You can't apply that retroactively, and it's intended to be a prospective document.
And I just want to add that I would see more of an impact if any of these parcels were vacant, but they've all been developed, and they're established. I could see us getting into some challenges with developers if we were doing this on some land that was designated employment, and we said, no, now we think it should be multifamily residential. That's the kind of change that should go through a public hearing, and we should work with those landowners to go, our vision is different for this area, and we don't think this is appropriate for employment anymore. I think that's maybe the key difference with these, with these parcels that we're talking about tonight.
Well, the one that I was looking at most intensely, of course, was Inverness, knowing, I mean, I worked in Inverness for many years before everything was developed, and I realized that there are paths for commercial buildings that are starting to, construction is starting on, but there's been so much residential construction around the golf course. I mean, the entire area, it was like, how much further is that going to spread, knowing there's a light rail stop nearby? So hence, hence my question, was really directed toward that particular parcel. Thank you.
And just getting back to the jurisdictional question, this shows Dry Creek has occurred north and turns into Havana, just south of Geddes. And these are the most recent residential units in the Inverness area, and the blue indicates that it's in Centennial's jurisdiction. This site is developing as more medical office buildings, so that's a commercial, and then, you know, everything that's not in blue, you know, with the exception of the water here, that, those are all in unincorporated Arapahoe County. And you can see there's a, you know, this is a cluster of residential units. This is the mixed-use area. There's like an orthodoncia, Eddie Merlot's, a number of...
Right, commercial, yeah, enterprises there.
Yeah, this, you know, truly is a mixed-use site there.
One other thing that might just be interesting to keep in mind is that the employment land use designation does allow for a certain amount of residential if it's developed as part of a cohesive plan that incorporates business and residential, whereas some of these areas that Alan has mentioned have just developed residential. So I think, you know, leaving the employment in place over Inverness is probably not a problem, because that is more of an integrated type development, even though it's not a single preliminary development plan, or master development plan, or something like that. It is actually individual parcels with individual zonings, but it's been developed cohesively with a common set of development standards that are very typical throughout the whole development, a common planned sign program, bus shelters that all, you know, comply with the planned sign program to help with the circulator bus that serves the light rail. So it looks like a cohesively planned development, even though they're actually individually zoned parcels.
In response to Commissioner Lantz's question about the broader question about how do we want to address potential amendments to the map if a rezoning gets approved that you did not approve a comprehensive plan amendment for? And after thinking about this, since I wrote this memo, I'm wondering if that is maybe more of something we should take up or look at on a case-by-case basis, because it may be something that you didn't feel really strongly about, and it went and was approved eventually, and maybe it's not, maybe it's something you should go, yeah, we should change the map to reflect that. But on the other hand, if it's something that you're staunchly adamant about, no, this is our vision for that area, and we need to stick to it, it might just depend upon the circumstances of the, the application for that particular piece of ground. So I'm not sure we can resolve that tonight.
Well, I think, just a comment as far as development, you know, I look at Inverness, and I know part of what took place there as far as the residential is pushed towards transit-oriented development. And so I think we also want to bear in mind that, you know, since this is a forward-looking document, different types of development, new things that are brought forth in the community that might be beneficial, and we haven't done them before, and we want to leave room for that. So, you know, I'm not super worried about whether or not, you know, zoning was overlaid with a comp plan and multifamily grew up there. I mean, it may have made sense for the area. It may have been the affordable housing option, and, you know, in a well-fed intersection with lots of public transportation. So, you know, I think that we probably do want to reflect with the map changes what's occurred there, so that, you know, future development complements it versus, you know, that would have been allowed if it were a coal mine there, and so now, go for it, you know? If that makes sense.
Can, can, can any of this affect any home-based business? So if people are thinking that they can run a business out of a home or a town home, and they're doing so, can any of this affect any of the small business?
The actual regulate, regulation of the land uses and what can occur is the zoning, and this won't impact or change the zoning on the property. And if it's, if it's, well, a lot of these are zoned mixed-use, it'll depend upon what that development plan says about home occupations or business out of a, out of a home, or it may defer to our zoning regulations. I'm not exactly sure how that works, but no, this won't impact the ability for someone to do that one way or the other.
But most of what you've listed are like, you're trying to get it to reflect reality, because the change has already happened.
Yes.
This wasn't accurate.
Yes, correct. That should have been my presentation.
So do we need a motion, or?
Yeah, do you want us to make a motion, or?
I think just maybe a consensus that go ahead and make these changes administratively, and we'll, we'll prepare the map and get it into the comprehensive plan document online, and get you copies for your, for your, the document that you have, and create a case and some paper trail for this, and we'll be done, so.
Mrs. Moon did bring up some things that might or might not come up in the future, but for right now, do we have a general consensus? Is this a good to go? Good to go?
Yes.
All right.
So, so approved.
Thank you. Hopefully, we won't have any more of these.
Before we leave, Jan, could you address the coming requested hearing on the Waffle House with the county commissioners in a study session?
Sure.
I don't know that ever happening, and I, I knew, who's going to represent the county, and how does that work?
Okay, so under the amended planned unit development process that was adopted, oh, boy, like, a couple of years ago, went into effect April of last year. This was one of those projects that used to have a final development plan that would come to the planning commission and then go to the board for action. And under the streamlined FDP process, the board didn't necessarily hold a public hearing, but they took final action on the approval. Under the new PUD process that we're now operating under, some of those specific development plans stop at the planning commission. So that's where Waffle House fell. Your action was considered a final action on that specific development plan. So it would not have gone on to the board automatically, but there is a provision in that PUD code that within 10 days of the planning commission action, the board could just decide that there was enough concern that they would like to have a public hearing, and they could call it up, which they did not do. Or the, anyone living within 200 feet of the amendment boundary could have filed an objection letter, but they were happy with what you did, so they did not file an objection letter. Or the applicant could file an objection letter, and that's what occurred. They were not happy with your decision. So they filed an objection letter to the planning commission's action. Staff then forwards that on to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners can make the decision whether to schedule a public hearing, and it would be a new public hearing. They would take into account what you considered, but they're not limited to that. It's not like an appeal where they can only decide whether or not you made a mistake. They, it's, it's more like the final development plan type of hearing. So we have a short, what we call a drop-in study session scheduled with the board on November 13th to find out whether or not the board wants to schedule a public hearing, or whether or not they would just let the planning commission decision stand. And that's not a formal meeting, so there's no public input. It's a public meeting, so people can come if they want to, but it's done in a conference room across the hall, and typically, they do it...
Are you giving a presentation?
Not usually. We, we do have a, well, not to talk...
We did a staff, we did a staff report that just explains essentially what Jan just mentioned. You know, it's the board's discretion as to whether or not they want to hear it. There's no obligation to hear it in any way, shape, or form. So essentially, they'll sit around a table and consider the staff report and talk among themselves as to whether they want to hear it or not. All that's in the staff report.
Oh, no, he doesn't get to make a presentation. He's, he plans to attend. It would be up to the board members whether or not they want to hear from anybody in the room. We know that he plans to attend. We know that there are some neighbors who plan to attend, but we have told them, this is a little conference room. This is not really like a hearing room, so please select some people to come and attend and listen if you'd like, but most likely, the board is not going to hear from anyone. They're just going to make a decision.
So if they're going to hear from you, and you recommended that the Waffle House be approved, are you going to say, we recommend?
The staff report doesn't make any recommendation, one way or the other, other than to tell the board that it's their decision.
Yeah, they have, they'll have a brief staff report that, which has already been submitted. It just basically says, here's the process. It does note that, you know, there was a controversy and a disagreement over the 24-hour issue. Some of the commissioners I know have listened to that recording that we made available to you all from 2009. So they do know what action you took, and, you know, what the basis of your decision was, that it was partly on the 24-hour issue, but it was also on the architectural issue, so, incompatibility, so. But we don't make a recommendation as to what action they choose. And...
Was it a hurry, hurry process after walking in? What time is that? Is it 1:00? I can't reach, that's where I have a bike.
Um, you know, I honestly don't remember what time it is.
Is that subject, is, well, it's open because they requested, they objected, so it's open to, it's under the sunshine law, right? So it is going to be a public meeting?
Right. Okay, so...
That doesn't mean people can turn...
Right, okay, that's...
...to your study sessions.
Right.
If you knew someone was here, and you wanted to ask someone questions, or say, hey, do you want to give us some input? You could, but it's not a public hearing, so that's a little dicey.
It's scheduled for 3:30. Jason just advised me.
Is that still 3:30?
3:30 on the 13th.
3:30.
3:30.
Um, I've got it, uh...
Well, can we call our county commissioner?
I've actually got it on my calendar for 2:30, so we'll have to...
We're waiting for that time.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I got two things on my, Jason's right, there's a different study session at 2:30. I was looking at the wrong one. Um, you know, the board's study sessions, just, they get to them when they get to them. So these are estimated times, kind of like, if you had two public hearings, we'd have to guess what time the second public hearing was. So they give us a general time, but if they're ready 20 minutes early, they just go. They just do it.
So should we call our county commissioner that appointed us? And talk to him? And talk to them about this before they go into their meeting? We certainly can as a citizen, can we, as a planning commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, you absolutely have a First Amendment right to discuss whatever you want with your county commissioner. You know, you have to make a practical decision on whether you think that's useful or not.
No, uh. Um, I don't think so, because lots of things go to them. Say that, say the normal process was that they would have a public hearing, or render some kind of decision. You know, under that streamlined FDP process, they didn't typically hold public hearings, but a neighborhood could request, or an applicant within 10 days of the planning commission, they could request that they have a public hearing under the old system. So, yeah, otherwise, it was on the consent agenda.
Pardon me, I'm advised that, Jane, when you're speaking, is your mic actually turned on? You might need to.
So, um, I mean, it would just, it's just as if they got this going forward for a public hearing. I mean, they would have had a staff recommendation for approval and a planning commission recommendation for denial. I mean, that's essentially what they've got, except that in this case, yours was a decision rather than a recommendation. It would be the same thing, say, for a location and extent. If you denied a location and extent and the public agency appealed it to the Board of County Commissioners. If we had recommended approval, but you found reason to turn it down, they would be getting those two different recommendations, and it's up to them to address that.
So, having sat here for almost four years, anytime the planning commission turns something down, I, I cannot remember a time in the last four years where the county commissioners didn't overrule what we did. And in, in this case, you know, this, this is a decision, and it's a bit different than the normal process. We're, we're into a new process now. And so, the planning commission staff comes forward and says, well, we recommended approval. But the planning commission denied it. And so, what are the commissioners going to do? I mean, I, I can see, you know, if the planning commission says no, then, then for the staff, it should be no.
Well, we just, the process doesn't give us the option of making a recommendation to them at this point. Now, if they were to schedule a public hearing, I guess we have to, I mean, usually, we just send everything forward. We don't do a new recommendation. There was actually a fairly recent case where you all recommended denial, and the board turned it down, and that was the Platte Canyon Villas over in Littleton.
Then, then that's one.
That's one.
Just to be clear.
But it was made one.
At the end of the day, the board's just going to decide whether or not they want to schedule a public hearing and rehear this application.
So, to me, what that sounds like is that they're acting as an appeal body at that point. Because we rendered a decision because.
If they decide to hear.
Right, exactly. So, obviously, they have that, I mean, they have that ability if they decide to schedule a hearing. But why don't you just call it like it is? It's, it's, you know, it's an appeal. It's an appeal process, and I, I don't know. I, I just, I have a problem, conceptually, legally, it's like a zoning board of appeals, like a ZBA in my mind.
So, the code actually does have this section labeled appeals, even though we had a lot of discussion going into doing this section of the code, talking about not making it an appeal. It's actually under a section called appeals. But whereas with some of our processes, like with the location and extent, if someone files an appeal, it's automatic. It gets scheduled with the board. With this process, it's not automatic.
Okay, so it's discretionary, that, you know, they can move it on through to what is essentially an appeal process?
We're just going to let the planning commission's decisions stand.
Okay.
The code is very explicit that they may decide to require a public hearing, but they are under no obligation to do so. So, it could all end next week, except for any Rule 106 appeals.
Right, okay.
I have a question, and it's, I think it's a little, it's specific to the content of the hearing. It seemed to me that there was confusion as far as, there was a recommendation for approval, but there wasn't clarity on what the changes to the FDP were, specifically whether or not the 24-hour disallowed use was incorporated, and that they are asking for a change to that. Because I asked for clarification at the beginning, and it, you know, it, it just seems like it's kind of counter to what I've experienced with, let's say, comp plan amendments and things of that nature, that if that was an explicit requirement in their FDP that they could not have a 24-hour use on that pad, that had the planner been aware of that, they would have recommended approval. And I, I just wonder if there, you know, that seemed like that clarification came a little late in the game, like after we got the staff report and the recommendation for approval. Do you, is that the case, or would you think that approval would have been something you recommended regardless of that being incorporated as a requirement of the FDP?
I'd say, our attorney was pretty clear on the record that the 24-hour restriction was part of the approval of the original final development plan. The initial answer was a little meandering, but Mr. Hill did clarify, "We view 24 hours as being prohibited on that site." And to go on to the recommendation of approval. Oh, yes. So.
Yeah, I guess that's my question.
Let's start with the preliminary development plan, which has no restrictions whatsoever on the, the number of hours that a business can operate. So, the question.
Other than a convenience.
Other than a convenience store. And so, the planner worked from what can be done to mitigate impacts. Can it be mitigated through screening? Could it be mitigated perhaps through, you know, scrubber units or through film placed on the windows so you don't have bright lights shining in the neighborhood? And, you know, in my experience, a 24-hour workout facility, that actually helped mitigate the impacts. So, the justification for the recommendation of approval was based on mitigating the impacts of 24-hour uses. Now, that's not the same thing as saying, this is a wonderful, perfect use for the site. It's saying that it's possible to mitigate the impacts of the 24-hour use in staff's opinion, but there's a reason these go to public hearings, is to hear from the nearby residents who may be more affected by this restaurant than the staff who work at Lima Plaza. And the neighborhood said loud and clear, this is not something that's compatible with the neighborhood. And they also made the case that the developer made promises to them during the course of the original final development plan, and the neighborhood felt like the developer was coming and pulling the rug out. And I think based on the testimony in whole, including the staff recommendation, planning commission found that regardless of the mitigation measures recommended by staff, the impact would have been too great. That's, anyway, that's the, the long version of how I saw that hearing went.
I just, you know, I compare that to a meeting I was happy to be absent for when Alpert came through with a comp plan amendment for that little parcel on Quebec Way. And it was this vehement, "No, you can't, even though it's compatible with the area, and because you're trying to change the comp plan, and staff recommended denial." So, I, I just, I kind of find it, I, I, well, I'll just be frank. I struggle with it because it doesn't seem consistent. And so, I'm just, as far as this moving forward, I felt like, wow, sometimes you really kind of stand on that ceremony and say, "We said no, this is not appropriate." But, yeah, okay, you know, we can plant some trees this time, and it'll be fine. So, I, I struggle with how it's moving forward, and maybe it's kind of a blank slate sort of thing. I don't know how much, I'm sure that the county commissioners have read the minutes and some of that sort of stuff, but.
I hope they have.
I guess, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there that it feels a little inconsistent in terms of enforcement.
So, one of those was a comp plan amendment. One of these was a commercial mixed-use project with zoning already in place. When that final development plan moved forward, staff did not, had not recommended a further restriction on the 24-hour uses. That was something that came as a verbal response, and Mr. Sheldon still says, "That's not what I was saying." I mean, he still maintains there is no 24-hour restaurant.
Well, of course, yeah. I mean, that's, that's no surprise. But what, right, and, and, and what was discussed among the Board of County Commissioners at that point. I mean, yeah, it wasn't clear. There was more than one person acknowledging the 24 hours and saying, "Hey, from..."
It would be recorded, and that the property.
Right, right, exactly. And a commissioner, like, said, "Yes." I mean, at least one commissioner, if not two. So, that was where, to me, I saw that, that discrepancy. I mean, I don't care what Mr. Sheldon says. He, he's a lawyer, and he's representing the developer, okay? I mean, I, I'd be doing the same thing if I, if I was on that side. But the recording is, is, and I'm not saying it's absolutely clear, but they wanted to record the instrument. Allegedly, they agreed to that. And county commissioners, at least two of them, I think, were talking about the fact of the 24-hour prohibition. So, even though it wasn't memorialized in the manner that it should have been, the county commissioners, yes, at that point in time, by the, the then, then county commissioners.
Then it becomes, how do you memorialize this? What's to prevent a mini 24-hour fitness center coming forward and wanting to be on that pad? Where Waffle House was.
Nothing. They can ask.
Exactly.
But there's nothing to guarantee that they'll get approved, just like Waffle House is experiencing today.
Even if we backtrack and record something like a memo with the Mylar, I mean, you know, one of the applicant's issues was the Mylar doesn't say, "No 24-hour restaurant" on it. So, how are we supposed to know that? So, even if we were to go back and amend that document and say, okay, we did the research, based, based on verbal commitments made at the public hearing, we determined that this approved final development plan prohibits all 24-hour uses on this out parcel. Because it's a final development plan, they can still ask to change it without having to go back and redo the zoning. They can just bring in another SDP and ask again.
I agree with Catherine. The whole thing is, this made me uncomfortable. It's a new process. You know, I worked hard before that hearing, really unanimous, and that's unusual. You know, we put our heart into it, and I just feel like there's this little side door, and they're going to just blow us off, and it.
Well, we don't know what they're going to do.
Well.
But whatever they.
Historically, they have.
Whatever they do on the 13th, it's going to just be deciding, are we going to schedule a public hearing, or are we not? It won't be a decision on the application.
Well, but it is. If they're scheduling the hearing, it is.
Well, the greater concern for me is this neighborhood, you know, and that they keep thinking they're going to win this battle, and it keeps coming back. And it's like, well, maybe. And, you know, if you've been through the process on the other side, it's a nail-biter. You really don't know what's going to happen, and every time it comes through, it's new players who don't know the history. And, you know, I just, I feel for those people whose backyards are right on that parcel. You know, because regardless what we decide and how that all goes, I mean, I understand that, you know, the elected officials have more information and more understanding of certain things than we do. I get it, and that, that's understandable, and that's fine. I just feel for these residents who keep trying to protect their neighborhood. And, you know, first they got the apartment building, which they didn't want. They won some incremental battles there. And now, they thought they had prevented this years ago, and by what appears to be a technicality, they didn't really prevent it. And I know someone can come forward and ask for anything.
Even if it were in the Mylar, they could have come in and requested.
Sure, but the clarity, I know when I've come forward and said, "Hey, how about a comp plan amendment?" Well, good luck. It's going to cost you this much, and you got to go up against those people. I'll tell you, if I were the Waffle House people and saw that it was prohibited, I might have moved it on to another site and saved some money. I mean, and that's, to me, I kind of feel sorry for this applicant because I know how costly this process is, and that they've drawn up their stuff, and they've had to do the site plans and the engineering. And had it been clear that they were probably going to get a big opposition because it had been prohibited, they would have probably not evaluated the site in the first place. That's right. They'd have moved on.
But I guess we could stay here all night.
We can beat it to death, but.
By the way, we're uncomfortable, but if you could confirm the time of this start of the study session?
It's, it's scheduled for 3:30.
Okay.
But if the prior study session finishes up in less than an hour, they'll move on to it. Like, whenever, whenever it comes up. So, it could actually, we had one yesterday. It's been a long week already. We had one yesterday that I planned on being here 15 minutes before the scheduled time, and they were finished when I walked in.
So, it's 3:30 what day?
Uh, the 13th. Tuesday, the 13th. But you're welcome to, if you want to learn about special.
It's 2:30, yeah. Grab your lunch and magazine and.
The 2:30 study session is. Yeah, the 2:30 study session is on special districts, so that could actually be pretty interesting, if you want to come early.
You hesitated when I asked the specific question about, can't we just call the county commissioner?
I didn't hesitate, and I said you have an absolute right to do that.
I mean, as a member of the public, but you sort of flinched a little bit. There we go, there we go. That's what I saw.
You know, and I think Catherine kind of had a side comment there, too, that, you know, you have to question whether that will be effective. Maybe it will, maybe it won't.
Well, it just.
We drove to Penn Street. We got to get a few licks in here.
I don't know if this will make you feel better, but it's my understanding that the neighborhood is planning to send staff a letter for us to forward on to the board prior to the study session. If we get it, we'll send it. If we don't, we don't. Thank you. Um, if you want to just leave them, we'll use them to send on to the board.